Twenty-eight, Mike Picata, three fifteen North Newton, seventy-one forty-seven. Troy Caton, five oh one South Newton, one forty-nine ninety-three. Brandon Wood, one thirty-eight West Mill, two eighty sixty-three. Alicia Wheelock, three oh five West Union, seventy-seven forty-one. And Tiffany Hood, four nineteen West Jasper, one forty-five thirty-three. Is there anybody here for any of these properties with regards to water bills?
Yeah.
Okay, sir?
Uh, we, uh, our hot water heater went out, uh, I think a couple days ago. And we ordered the, uh, ten-foot hot water heater on Amazon, and I had someone put it in.
Okay, what's that have to do with paying your water bill?
I've been paying, but I've been paying, I paid some of the water bill. I had like a fourteen, a four hundred dollar light bill, and I paid like two hundred something on it. And I'm trying to keep it up.
Okay.
That's what I'm doing.
Has he paid just part of the water bill?
He didn't pay part of it.
Okay, so when will you pay the balance of the water bill?
The next, I already get like nine hundred or something on social security. I get like small income, income check, and it's kinda hard to do with the light bill, car payment, and all that.
So, so, so when will you pay the water bill?
I'll be doing that on the first one, the next, my, my next check is-
The first of September?
Yes.
But you'll be another month behind that?
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, so I, I, I will, uh, with the exception of this one, I, I would make a motion that we give him grace on this one and let him, not shut him off until the second, as, as long as he pays it on the first.
Exactly.
But you'll have another bill that you need to be working on.
Yes.
Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to shut off the rest of him.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unsafe Buildings, Judd.
Six fifty-eight South Newton Street, Steve Patrisko.
Correct.
And where we left this was... Finished repairing, replacing, or painting the siding on the front of the house where the porch was removed.
I'm happy to inform this body that, um, all the requirements that was sent to me under the understatement, the documents of which I received have all been met now. The siding has been done on the, on the porch, or where the porch was, uh, torn off. And actually, we did the whole siding on the front, and then we painted the other side. I'm gonna be looking for a stained glass window to put up on the top. I don't know what was up there. It was like that when the house was moved, and Laura and I bought the house. Other than that, um, all the requirements have been met, um, that was asked of me of this body.
I think so.
So, would you recommend that we release it?
Yeah.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to release.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It's been moved, we have a second?
Second.
We're moving to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Tom, appreciate your work with us.
Mr. I appreciate, and I wanted to say thank to Tom for y'all working with me and giving me the leadway to get the things done, you know, at my leadway with the economic situation. I appreciate that.
It's what we try to do. If you'll work with us, we'll work with you.
I see that, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two twenty-two, no, East North Street, Michael and Tina Goodman. Okay, and where that was left was repair or replace the roof by September fifteenth, and repair the missing siding on the house by August eighteenth. So, we're at the missing siding on the house.
We came up with, I came up with back issue, medical issues, and I wasn't able to get more of the siding completed on that one, but we did get some of the dog panels replaced, so it's more secure on that one, which wasn't part of it, but it still is appearance improvements. But I should be able to get back to getting the north side, northeast side of the dog pen area finished up this, with siding this month. I know you guys have been very patient with that one so far. A lot of our attention went to the five thirty-two property, trying to get one taken care of over the other one.
You'll get the northeast side of the dog pen siding done by?
The next meeting.
September fifteenth.
So, we're all waiting. We had the whole length of the house in the dog pen area. We're down to just the east end of it now. So, we've got half of it sited.
So, you're saying you'll have the repair or replace the roof by September fifteenth and the siding?
I'm hoping to have the roof completed. We're having problems coming up with the money to get the metal roofing. That's pretty daunting. I have the siding to put up on the side of the house.
So, the siding will be done by?
The next meeting.
By the next move? And you may or may not have the metal roofing by then?
Correct. We have the lumber for the roofing, and we have the covering for it. We just don't have the metal siding to go up there yet. It's kind of, you know, I don't wanna put wood up there without putting the metal on it. I don't wanna ruin.
I would make a motion that we grant her another month?
Second.
Is that right on the siding?
Siding isn't done.
Right, she'll finish, so she, she'll, she said she'd finish the northeast side of the dog pen siding by next month, and then the roof is still an issue.
Then the south side siding.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. So, wha- what about, what else needs to be done?
Siding on the south side at the top, which they can do if they do the roof, would be my idea anyway.
Correct. There is one strip at the very top that goes underneath the edge of the roofing. And then there's a small piece underneath the window on the south, southeast side, underneath that living room window.
You plan to have that done in a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one is five thirty-two South Benton Street, and this, what you were just talking about, what was, what was to be done was finish the fascia by painting or covering it on the southwest side of the roof.
Correct, that has been done. So, that property should be completed. I hope.
Good. So, it's your recommended we release?
That's, that's the only thing that was left there. I mean, there's other things that need to be done, but, uh, it's not part-
Not part of the-
I guess I didn't notice it to begin with, first time, so.
So, this particular one is your recommended release?
Yeah, then we'll come back to it later.
I'll make a motion to release?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you could get with me, and let me know what those other items are.
You hear that, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's all the roof trim around the, on the, um, east and north side of the roof needs to be replaced.
The house?
Yeah.
We planned on taking care of that, but you guys specified this stuff, so I wanted to get that taken care of. The northeast corner only has a section about like this that needs to be replaced. The rest of it just needs to be painted. I just couldn't, I've not been able to get up a louder ladder to this ladder.
Next one is, um, four nineteen West Jasper Street, Tiffany Hood. Okay, and where we left that?
I finished-
Just one second. We're gonna remove the junk and debris around the exterior of the property and either replace the siding, repaint the siding, and you are gonna replace broken and damaged windows.
I, uh, started painting my house, or painting the house, and I ran out of paint right there at the end. And I've been cleaning up most, trying to clean up more around the house with, uh, gouging stuff. And I was wondering if I could get some, I'll probably have it done by the next.
So, what have you done for removing junk and debris around the exterior of the house?
I had a friend of mine today, uh, helping take a load of junk in.
Confirm that, John?
No, I haven't seen any of it moving.
I moved the golf cart and some more, uh, there was a pool I had to move too.
I didn't see it this afternoon.
Yeah, I know, that's why I already took the junk in this afternoon.
Oh, he's saying he didn't notice anything different this afternoon?
No. But I took the junk in, uh, just morning that I had thereby in front of the garage.
Okay, is there more stuff in the yard that you know you need to get rid of?
Um, yeah.
Okay. And then, the windows?
The windows on that, uh, a friend of mine helped me get those today, so those will be in today.
Okay. How many windows was it?
Uh, there's, I counted them, there's, uh, three.
Counting the front picture window?
Yeah, uh, the front picture window, that's no longer assisting. It's already plastered over and has drywall on the inside of it.
Okay.
It's just the two windows and the other side.
So, so this window that's been covered up, have you made the front, have you made it appear like the rest of that side of the building? You know what I'm saying? Can you, gotcha, okay. Show, they're the decision makers.
It didn't look like the front windows, the front window replaced, covered over.
The front window needs replaced or?
Yeah, that's one. Getting, I'm getting the window replaced today. A friend of mine, like I said, has helped me put on, put the windows on.
Okay. So, you think you'll finish the painting of the house, you'll have the windows in, and you'll have the junk in the, around the exterior picked up by the next meeting?
Yes.
Now, you're not gonna wait until the day of the next meeting to start picking up the stuff in the yard, right?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so you have it all gone well before the meeting, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to give him another month?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's September fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Next one is five twenty-three South James Street.
I'm just curious why he's, he's not even a property owner. He, he, he isn't even on the deed.
I think he's more or less acting as the agent of the property owner.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, we know that.
Did you say agent?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard that.
Five twenty-three South James Street, Miguel Serrano Hernandez. Okay, so what was, uh, this is, so he didn't appear last time, the garage door was open, that was new. Twenty-five hundred dollar more fine was held in abeyance and reset to today. And I mailed him an unsafe building order by certified mail and regular mail, and the certified mail came back unclaimed.
I got something on that, too. So, last time I told you guys that I thought he may be incarcerated?
Oh, yeah.
You had me check, he was, he was out, but he does live in Kington. But I do not have an address, but Judd, I could probably get you one.
Um, one, one thing at a time here, so on your, so I don't know if he's forwarding mail. You're saying you don't know whether he's getting mail at, um-
He's, so this house here, he's not even living in?
Right, I, I sent it to three eleven East Graham Street in Kington.
That might be right.
It is, I got, I went on Beacon and got the address.
So, he received a non-certified mailing to, um, remove the remaining garage. Uh, what I said in the modified order from July was require that the garage be torn, fixed or torn down on or before August eighteenth, or the town council may remove the remaining garage and bill the owner for the removal services. That's kinda where we're at. And you got this twenty-five hundred dollar fine hanging out there in abeyance that we need to figure out what you're doing with.
So, we, we are confident that we got service, and?
Yes.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we go ahead and, and impose the fine. How much will it cost us to remove that garage?
Any ideas?
What, what was the address of this one? Is it South James, South James?
It is, uh, five twenty-three South James.
Two houses down there, the old tower on the store.
I'd have to go through, probably post you down once back, if it's possible, I'd have to take a good look at it. As I, I look at the house when I drive by, I've been living in the garage, I'll have to look at it, but... Five to ten grand, probably, we can do it, just in dumpsters and-
I don't know what's in that garage, but if it's got his property in the garage, it needs to be stored. Sorry. If it's, if it's junk, I mean, I don't know who gets to make that call, but, uh, you know, if it was recycling and trash bags and stuff, I'd say dumpster, but if it's not, if it's a car or bikes or-
Car.
What is it? Okay, I don't know anything about it, so I'm just saying, um-
I think his intentions from before was to flip the house. I don't know that there's anything in there or not, we'd have to just look.
In the house or in the garage?
The garage, sorry.
Yeah. Um, yeah, hopefully, if there's not, if it appears there's anything of value, it needs to be stored.
I would impose the twenty-five hundred dollar fine. And let's notice him again and tell him we're going to impose another twenty-five hundred dollar fine on top of that if he doesn't come to the meeting and tell us what he's gonna do to correct this.
Can we put on there, about all the brush and everything, just grow it up around there at the same time?
Let me see if it was in the original order, I don't wanna make this, I don't wanna expand this, 'cause we're, it's getting hard to get him to do anything. Remove trash, debris, and fire hazardous material in and about the premises. So, twenty-five hundred dollar fine held, a new twenty, twenty-five hundred dollar fine imposed, an additional twenty-five hundred dollar fine held in abeyance if he doesn't come to the next meeting and tell us his intentions with the garage?
Yes, and can, in that, can we tell him to, uh, remove any property that he deems valuable?
Mm-hmm.
Because we're going to take the garage down?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The next is, uh, five oh two South Newton Street, Joe Deal. And you were going to remove junk and debris around the exterior, exterminate vermin, remove or repair the front steps, replace or repair the roof, trim the trees, repair the wood trim windows, repair the brick stucco, trim and abate weeds and overgrown grass on the property. Other than that, uh, so what, tell them what, where we stand.
It's coming along pretty good, but it's going, uh, I didn't think it was that much work, you know, but it does seem to be a lot of work, plus, there's a lot more work, uh, besides what's on the list.
Tell them some things that you've done, Mr. Deal.
Got rid of, uh, vermin. Cut a bunch of trees, got rid of the construction material around the building, but now there is new brush, which I was gonna burn on Wednesday if there's no burn ban.
I think he waited till the last minute, too, 'cause what was trimmed had happened to happen this weekend, I guess, past weekend.
Saturdays.
So, there's not much done at all, period.
So, what are you gonna have done by next month?
Uh, I'm gonna try to have everything on the list done, plus more.
Everything on that list?
With the exception of the new roof. So, the roof is probably gonna have to be patched, but the stucco will be done, and then the windows will be good to go.
And then have tuck pointing, too?
So, so let's go through these, 'cause, 'cause I'm gonna write it down, and that's what, I'm gonna be reading back to them in thirty days, and you're gonna be judged on it. So, remove or repair the front steps, yes or no? By next meeting or no?
Yes, but can I cover it with a deck, or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, I can't write on this, so cover steps with deck.
With a permit. He's adding square footage.
You talking to me?
I'm talking to you both. You'll have to have a permit, because he's gonna be adding square footage.
What are you gonna do there?
So, tell me about this deck you're gonna add.
I was gonna add a wraparound deck from the front, whatever it's called.
Is there a deck there now?
No.
And so, would, you're just gonna go over the top of an existing set of steps or something?
Just the corner set of steps.
Okay.
And then keep the set of steps, which is in the front, and then extend, so there's a mini patio that's covered, and then I was gonna extend it around, or minimum, I will fix the steps.
Gotcha. Repair or replace, uh, repair or replace the roof, and you said you may be just repairing it?
Repairing, yeah. And then maybe replace the front roof and parts of the garage roof.
Okay, and then trim the trees, did you do that already, or is there more to trim?
There is a lot more to trim.
So, you're, you'll do that by, uh, September fifteenth? I'm asking.
Yes.
Repair the wood trim windows.
Yes.
And repair brick stucco. And trim and abate weeds and overgrown grass. Okay. So, what aren't you doing by next? You're not gonna replace the roof, but what else are you not going to do by next month? And here's the list again. Remove junk and debris around the exterior, that'll be done, right?
Right.
Exterminate vermin is done. Remove or repair the front steps, we've talked about that. You think that's gonna be done by September fifteenth? The, patch the roof and possibly replace the front porch roof?
Right, so-
Or add a-
Replacing the front, uh, roof would be one of the things that I might not-
Okay.
Get to, but then, everything else should be complete.
And then, um, trim trees, repair the window, trim windows, repair the stucco, and trim and abate weeds. So, okay, by September fifteenth? That needs a motion if that's acceptable.
So, moved?
And then, not saying that I won't do it, but in the case that I don't complete it,
and then I do get the five thousand dollar fine, how long do I have to pay?
Um, if you keep making good progress, don't wait till the day of the meeting, but if you keep making good progress, we will keep obey, abating that fine, and we won't, if you keep making progress and eventually finish, we won't impose that fine.
It's just if I stop?
If you stop and we can't work, we can't get you to work, then, yeah, we're gonna have to.
And you're still at Tinley Park?
So, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The next one is five thirty-five South Central, uh, Hugo Villanueva.
Yeah.
Okay, and that was reset. So, from the July meeting, Norma and Emma were here?
Yeah.
And, um, exterminate the vermin, so that there are like no openings in the foundation or something like that. I think that was the issue. I, that wasn't in the order that I sent, that was just in my notes from the meeting, so that's not, that's not an issue. Here, here's the list that I mailed to you. Remove junk and debris around the exterior of the property, is that done or not done?
Done.
Most of it.
Okay, so he thinks there's some that still needs to be done, and so John is the person that you need to satisfy on this. Uh, he's the one that's gonna decide whether it's clean enough. And so, do you know how to get ahold of him? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll, he'll write that out for you, and just make contact with him and finish it up, 'cause it sounds like you've made, you've made a good start on that.
Just trash around the trees and the north side of the house.
Mow down the tall grass and weeds, especially by the garden, so that the yard doesn't harbor vermin, so that- Okay. And remove the electrical line that was hanging down?
They already fixed that up, they called NIPSCO, and they're gonna come and put all those lines and the like.
Okay. So, one second here, so remove the additional junk you've mowed and, and especially by the garden. Apparently, the garden was pretty tall, and that's done?
Yeah, we, um, when the garden is all finished, he's gonna do all of that.
Okay. Which, it sounds like that's gonna need to be done September fifteenth if they agree. Is that possible to wrap that up? And, um, NIPSCO is gonna take care of the electrical line hanging down? I don't know if it's live or not, but there's one hanging down, I saw it in the picture. And then, uh, remove both burn barrels. Done or not done?
It's done.
Okay. So, it sounds like remove the additional junk that he just talked to you about, and have NIPSCO clean up the lines? And that would do it?
Make a motion that we grant another month?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the last one is, uh, three twenty-six North Newton Street, Dane Jewell. So, okay, this goes back to May. And you were going to, uh, repair the siding on or before today? How much more time do you think you need to do that? How much siding are we talking about?
Well, he's not, what we originally talked about was the missing siding, old, original siding on the front of the house, and he's got that covered.
Okay.
Now, he's trying to put siding, all the way, new siding on it.
Oh.
And that's gonna take time, running.
Is that part of your unsafe building order? The new siding?
No. He's done what the, what he's supposed to do.
That's what I'm looking for.
So, so he's done everything that you cited him for?
Yeah.
So, you would recommend release?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to release?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's all.
Anything else, John?
Had a couple, two building permits. That's about it.
That's it, anything for John? Financials, Tina?
At the end of July in our general, we ended with four hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents. Water operating, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Sewer operating, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Our trash fund has forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents, and that gives us a grand total of one million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Do you need anything, Tina?
No.
Anybody have anything for Tina? We have a proposal from Mike Rowe. Judd, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, um, so, the proposal is to, it sounds like, to kinda further develop part of the residential Tiff area, is that right?
Uh, those lots he's talking about are out here on fifteen fifty.
Are they in the Tiff district?
No, they're not in the Tiff district.
If your proposal is to use Tiff money to do it, that would-
I'm not.
Okay.
We're not, we're just, is it something we could do?
Like as an economic development?
Yeah.
Tool?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
He's talking about the possibility of five houses, and we would- He's talking about the possibility of five houses and we would have, ultimately, we would end up with around twenty-two thousand invested into it as economic development in a forgiven loan, basically. Which sounds like a pretty good deal to get five houses for twenty-two grand.
It, why is that not in the TIF district?
Well, it's just, it's just all the way on the north side of town.
So we had talked about, and I, this goes to your email too. We had talked about at some point-
But we didn't do it though, did we?
No, no, but I don't know how we went from fifty-three parcels down to seven either. I gotta, I, that takes a little homework. That sounds like somebody just missed something, went last, the past year in the assessor's office. I need to follow up on that, but is this, like he's trying to get this started now, like immediately?
Yeah, he owns the lots and he wants to develop them or not. And if we, he, he will sell them and just move on to someplace else, or he will develop them and build houses if, if we're willing to put some economic development into it.
And, and it looked like it was gonna be like services, like surveying and stuff? Is it, is there gonna be a division of land?
Yes, yes.
So that'll be a subdivision and he'll have to have a kind of a defined plan that gets approved by the plan commission and you as a board for a subdivision and part of that is gonna be, like, you're gonna be obligated to stub utilities out there at each of the lots and have street access if it doesn't have street access. And so I know, I saw surveying on there on his list of things. Does his, does his number include the utility aspect or is that in addition?
I think, I think it probably does. We need to verify that, but I think it probably does because, you know, he knows he needs them. He's been, he's been talking with Dustin as far as what, what we need as far as sewage and water and so on.
In my, my opinion, we should do an executive session with that economic prospect to find out what exactly he's looking at and then I can try and find that economic development plan to see how hard it would be to include that in the TIF district or if we can't, is there a way to use any of that TIF money instead of town money? And try and figure that out in that meeting.
Okay, if you two gentlemen are interested in pursuing this, then I will reach back out to Mike and set up this, and Tina as well, and set up this executive meeting. Gary?
I'm in favor, yes.
Okay, I will reach back out with Mike and coordinate with Tina and we'll set up this executive session.
Yeah, I don't know what you're looking at in terms of speed, but I know right now my Wednesday and Friday are wide open.
Okay. I'll, I'll get back in touch with Mike.
So, so he was, he was thinking part of it.
Survey.
And the sewage, but like the electric, that's-
Yeah, I don't know, water.
So, it's, that's a definite possibility to do, to use town funds and I don't know about TIF funds. I wanna look at that closer for his proposal.
Okay. And then the next one would be the Tricia Potts proposal.
There it is. I had that printed out. And hers came through as like a building permit at two nineteen, two twenty-one South Newton Street. And it says in a TIF district on the building permit.
I believe it probably is.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to see, okay. Facade improvements.
Would you like for us to move on and then come back to that?
Yeah, I mean, I see her what she's asking for. It, it's gonna come down to that economic development plan, Jim, to see whether these types of things. I can tell you generally speaking what's allowed with TIP, TIP money, but this is really specific.
Would you like to have, have a chance to just study that a little bit?
Yeah, and maybe even set her up with the same meeting and talk about using TIF money and how you're gonna use it.
Are you guys in favor of, of setting up an executive session with her and discussing this?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Fire department.
Last meeting, we've had thirteen medical runs, four fires, one of those being a plane crash. It's kinda odd for this area, but.
Where was the plane crash?
Three hundred east. It was actually Benton County, North.
Dusty.
It was in the-
Crop dust.
Our fire department district, but it was technically in Benton County, so our fire department man, their sheriff's and ambulance and all that. It's, but pilot was okay. He just ended up motor stalled when he was coming down the crop dust and he knows died into the field. Unusual for this area, so. The department, we kind of voted as far as the ambulance that we have talked about and the MCI trailer that were there. We opted to, the ambulance was just becoming too much of a hassle and a headache. And that was given to a dairy fire department that apparently has wrecked multiple ambulances and was in dire need of one. And I guess ours was suitable. The MCI trailer, we've had problems with getting it stocked as well as getting the protocols and stuff for getting a call. And we've looked at it, especially with HFS coming out outside of town here, and the multiple businesses and whatnot in the area, as well as the multitude of even tractor trailer fires, looking at the possibility of a different piece of equipment such as like a foam trailer that would probably be more beneficial for this area. We've put on the town water wars where we just booked up a bunch of trucks and invited the town up, which was a decent turnout. All of the equipment to the former chief has been, has been returned. There's debate on that, but as far as the department is concerned, we have, are now completely finished with that situation.
Well, not completely. You're close.
I mean, I know that there's an email and stuff out there and there's some things that are alleged, but I went through that stuff personally. Nobody wrote anything on it. Half of that stuff was collected prior to anybody else, any of the new people getting on. Long story short, do handwriting analysis. It is handwriting. He wrote on it. And the allegations of, you know, there are ways, as a fire chief, it's their duty to come up with the ways to staff or to equip the department. Those ways are either going through you guys as the town, the trustees, fundraisers and donations or grants. Everybody knows this. There's also multiple areas out there to where you can get, like medical equipment. There's programs out there to get that stuff done. That's the avenues the chief should take. At no point is it ever required by any chief to take personal items or anything of that nature and stock a fire department, especially without really the approval of the entire department. Like I said, we've discussed that. I don't know if you guys know of anything new.
Well, Judd pointed out that before this thing got in front of a judge, we should probably see if there's any receipts involved. So, in, through email, I asked Ryan if he had receipts to send him and I said, "original receipts." He sent this stack of paper that Judd is thumbing right there. And while we're not seeing a lot of serial numbers and that sort of thing, but a lot of things don't have serial numbers, Judd's gonna number the pages and then make a copy and give a copy to you. We would like for you guys to look through that and see if you could line it up with any of this equipment that he's talking about. We understand that some things he may have provided and you've used up and then replaced, so those won't count. But we probably oughta see the authenticity of these receipts.
So what's your email address?
The department one was firechief.
Is that okay or do you wanna buy mail?
However, is easiest, I guess.
Okay, it's easiest to email, so go ahead. Firechief?
Goodland dot I N dot Judd.
Okay.
I don't know what can be done, but as you guys are aware, the emails that I've received and that you have received, he's still utilizing the old fire department email. And my concern with that is, I don't know if he's using it to still, for, I don't know who's emailing with that email. And I don't know in what capacity he's stating his position with the department anymore with that email. And if somebody sees that and they see it as a fire department email, I don't know what can be done, if anything, about using that.
So is he using chief like you just gave?
Not that one, but the previous one that he had tied to his own personal email that we lost when all this was done. He's still using that email instead of like his own personal one. He's using the one that was created for the department.
Created by him?
Yeah. But again, he's, that email was at one point tied to the department. And I'm sure all contacts and everything that was in there, I don't, I don't know that he has, I don't know that he will, but he's definitely using that email to reach out to us.
Goodland dot VFD at gmail dot com?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll mail this to you. What's your mailing address?
Run that email.
We're not doing that.
Oh.
We're just gonna do a by mail now. What's your mailing address?
One twenty-four West Prairie Street.
Okay.
Anything else, Joe?
I got one thing for him.
As far as the training, the state said we have one that was enrolled and passed, there are fire one and two. We got one signed up for the one in Rensselaer. The class there and then we're still waiting on Mr. Standish. He said he was setting up one here. Still waiting to hear more details on that. Brooke invited us. We, we went over and toured Brooke's acres with the Brooke Fire Department and members of the Kettleman Fire Department. And for training, we helped resident on the edge of North and James Street burn a large brush pile.
Anybody have anything else for Joe?
I do, if you guys are done. I was just asked this an hour ago by Phil McGinnis, who's a Benton County commissioner, who was at a school board meeting that I was at and he, and it may be because of this plane thing. He said, "Could I find out if the fire department has worked out its contracts with the townships, specifically Union Township and Ty Fishback?" You know what he's talking about?
I know there was discussion with Union Township, but I don't recall a Ty Fishback. Is he part of these?
He must be. What's your telephone number?
Two one nine, eight six nine, six three zero eight.
I'll, I'll give you a shout and maybe I'll bring in Phil to the call and figure out what he's trying to ask for. I don't, I wasn't, I'm not following what's missing here.
Hey, Judd, the last time that that was discussed, it sounded like they were on board with our contract increase for that township, but it was a matter of getting their new budget year before they could execute it.
And Ryan was telling them it was due immediately. And they said if it's due immediately, then we'll not use Goodland.
But in years past, we've told them we wanted an increase. They said we can't increase it because, you know, we're in the budget, but then it doesn't get remembered when they do their new budget and so it just keeps.
Right.
So now it's, that's budget time now, so we need to increase.
Okay. Okay, so we'll talk. I'm not advocating for him. I just, he asked me and I was rubbing elbows with him at a meeting on something else and he asked, he knew that I was coming here. Okay, that's all.
Does anybody have anything else for Joe? Police department.
For July, we had thirty-four calls. Thirteen were handled by the county, ten by us. Eight of those, ten were handled by me, two by the deputies. Two tickets, four warnings, four arrests. We did tow them vehicles out as you seen up at one twenty-seven West Jasper, Durham's old place.
Now the weeds are getting tall there.
And the, the owner of the property was, sent a letter just before John took over that. I sent a letter on the vehicles and the weeds. So yes, the vehicles, the vehicles are out of there. He's gonna need a computer to do this job. He can't, he's not gonna be able to do that particular job with just door hangers because he's gonna have to be able to issue citations. You know, once the initial notice of violation is sent out and they don't comply with it, then he'll send that notice of violation out that gives them time to, one, pay the, they're gonna have to pay the fine anyway. And that's a question I had. Who's gonna make them pay the two hundred and fifty dollar fine when we're right to fine unless we go to court?
Lean it?
Could you, oh. Might as well piss in the wind with that then.
So she, she sends the, the invoice for either the work that gets done or the fines and they don't pay it within thirty days and she fills out the form to lean it and sends it to the assessor.
So I'm gonna bring something up, and I know we've discussed this before, but the town in Kettleman tacks it to the water bill. I don't know anything any more than that. I don't know if it's legal, illegal. I, I would assume it is completely.
I don't think you can do that.
Instead of leaning that, they tack it to the water bill. As far as what I've been told.
This, and my apprehension about that is there's a federal case that talks about disconnection of water and we got into this when we were talking about disconnect for like apartment buildings and the constitutional right to, to water as a customer. It's a Seventh Circuit case. It's a, so it pertains to Indiana in particular. Because of that, I don't think you can tack extraneous things on and collect that as a debt collection method. I think that's what the whole point of the lien statute is all about. And let the county collect it. In their typical manner of collecting, I don't think you can attach it to. And I'm not giving an opinion about what Kettleman's doing. If they've got, their attorney gave them an opinion that they're gonna do it that way. I would never do that if I were you. Because if you go to disconnection because they haven't paid their water bill and it's not even a water bill that we're talking about, I mean, you're on pretty shaky ground.
Even if it goes to court, ultimately the, the lien is the only way that you go to collect it. Isn't that true?
Yeah, 'cause it's against, it's almost a secured debt at that point because it's against real estate. So as long as the value of the property is greater than the taxes owed and the lien's against it, you'll get it. If you take down a fifteen thousand dollar building and lean that and the property, the parcel that's left is worth two, you know, knowing it's gonna go up for tax sale and it's gonna be transferred to the town and, and then it's gonna be yours and you're out to fifteen until you sell it and make one or two back. That's kinda how it goes.
I just feel like we get nothing out of that process but a bunch of work.
Out of the notice of violation?
Because once you issue the notice of violation, then you know that you issued a fine. They don't do anything within that thirty days. They don't pay the fine. They don't take care of the problem. They don't come and talk to the council. Then we send these guys in to clean up. And I get it. I mean, that's the way it's gotta be done. It just seems like it's a lot of money spent to not get any money back because a lot of these places are rental properties, so the people that live in there, they don't care.
Are we leaning them? Are the, are the liens being paid?
Unless they sell the property.
I just wish we could somehow break the money in. We're doing the work, not the county, not the state, not anybody else.
But the, the county does that collection for free.
Yeah, I get it.
And if you're gonna put me as the debt collector, the, the office, you're gonna lose a chunk of it to collecting it. And so like me waltzing over to Kettleman for one or two hearings a month is gonna be a big loser for you. I'll promise you.
Well, I think they oughta just come to her and pay it. That's the way it should work.
They can, they can pay, yeah, they can pay.
They don't. That's what I'm saying. And there's nothing but a lien to force them to do that. That lien is-
But the lien's the purest thing you got, 'cause it's gonna be done by-
Thirty years before they sell it.
Hey, are we collecting on any liens in the thirty years of our employees here?
That, that's incorrect.
If they add it to the taxes, okay.
They, they, that's, the only thing I'm talking about when I talk about liens is that they get collected like taxes. That's what I'm talking about.
But we don't ever get any money from it.
Yeah, you do, you do, you do, you do, you do.
Thank you, any money from liens?
Maybe twice in the twenty years I've been here.
Don't they get certified as property tax, on the property tax, where it has to be paid once a year?
Yes.
Or twice a year?
Yes. We just, we just started doing that.
So then they have to be paid, so we will get paid either in May?
That's what I'm saying, man, it'll happen. It's just you're, you'll see it in May of twenty twenty-six, you'll see some of those liens get paid. And that's how it should work, and I mean, it'll all, it won't involve us, and it'll come in on a settlement that you'll get from the county.
So it doesn't have to wait till the house is sold?
No.
Not yet.
No, 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 so, so, she, she certifies the lien to the assessor and the auditor and records it. So she's gotta do, she's gotta visit like every office in the courthouse. So if she did it like once a month and did all of them at the same time, and then they will, they not only record it, so it becomes a lien on the property if anybody bought that property and did, you know, they would see that there's a lien on the property when they buy it. But other than that, the assessor and the auditor are aware of that as a lien, and they add it to the tax rule. So if your tax bill was a thousand dollars each year, now it's a thousand dollars plus whatever you just added. And if you don't pay that in full next year with the thousand plus the new money, that's like missing a tax payment, and it's, that's year one. And on year one of a missed payment or a partial payment, that's when you actually get your right to start taking those properties to tax sale. Or using commissioners' sales to get title of the property. You don't have to wait for two unsuccessful sales, you have to wait for one unsuccessful.
On just one, one ordinance violation, if they didn't do any of that, that fine should be five hundred and fifty bucks. Because of the two hundred and fifty initial fine plus ten dollars a day for thirty days. 'Cause you can't collect any more than that, correct?
You can't pay her, I mean, yeah, the limiting, the limiting factor is two fifty, and that's why we picked that number, just so you know. So that if they were going to try and settle it before it got all official, they would be able to do that locally and not go through the courthouse. And so, but that's statutorily limited to two fifty cap, and so that's where you start at. And, you know, so if somebody got a citation that said now you owe two fifty plus ten dollars a day, that two fifty is actually for the first thirty days after the notice of violation period has passed. The notice of violation period is just no fine, it's just, hey, we're making you aware of this violation, and you got thirty days or fifteen days or whatever you say in the letter to do it. And then if you don't, then you move to the citation letter and say, alright, now you got a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for the thirty days that you're gonna be in violation fixing this thing, and you gotta fix it in thirty days. And if you don't, the town will. And the idea is that you would have contractors or your employees doing that, and then they would be invoiced for it and not pay the invoice within thirty days and then get leaned. Not go to court and file an ordinance violation, that just makes me a glorified debt collector. You can do all of that without me involved, that was the whole point of doing these forms, was trying to cut the middleman out and the expensive middleman out, and just try and do this purely with the county doing the work, the collection work for free.
So it's now being certified on the tax rules, so we will be collecting the money.
Okay. So not five fifty, just two fifty? Now, that you, you're, you're taking an initial...
Where's the ten dollar a day for?
After, after thirty days, we're saying, we're saying in the citation letter, now you owe us a fine for two hundred and fifty dollars for the thirty days that we're giving you to clean it up. And then after that, we start running ten dollars per day. After that, after that thirty day citation period, yes.
Okay. So anything in the past is just...
The notice of violation period is not billable, not, there's no consequence. That is us try, I mean, and it looks good to a judge if we did have to go to court, that we gave them without any, any strings attached. We told you, you're violating an ordinance and you need to stop it, and here's how you stop it. And if they stop it during the notice of violation period, end of situation, no money, end of situation.
I was just bringing that up since we, a couple of years ago, tore a couple, a couple houses down. We're probably not gonna see that money until it sells or goes up for tax sale or...
Not if you lean it right. If you lean it right, it should be collected, it should, they should attempt to collect it as property taxes, and when it goes through one unsuccessful tax sale, you should ask the commissioners to give you the deed.
So we can go back and lean those again?
Not lean them, have them and sell them to people.
No, I mean, the ones, the ones that we've tore down.
We didn't get any money from them.
From in, from in the past.
You've got, on an account, you've got six years, that would be in account statute limitations.
Okay, so we can, so we can go back and, and lean those properly now?
Yeah. So you're not talking about the guy that went to federal court, are you? That was a long time ago, that was Hunter.
Yeah.
I was thinking of like Rose's house on South, or on, yes, South Benton, Woods's house on South Newton.
So I don't know when those were, I mean, I just don't, I can't keep that straight.
Within the last few years.
Yeah, they, they should all been within the last two, three years.
Yeah, probably three or four years.
So any, anytime the town spends any money on a property or has their employees do anything at someone's property that's a nuisance, they should be sent a bill. And thirty days after that, it should be certified as collected like property taxes.
Okay, so you can go back and re-lean those, can you? Okay. Well, while Dylan's otherwise occupied, you wanna go ahead and street water and sewer?
Um, I didn't have anything to bring up other than two quotes. The first one, the backside here packet, for the red building at Foster Park. We were thinking about just skinning it and making it look like the two new buildings that FBI put up. Structurally, it's not in the best condition, so we were told the best thing to do would just be tear it down and start new. And then it would just be matching, that would be twenty-nine thousand for that building. And then the second quote is for our new building behind the post office. That would be for like our salt, rock, sand, just to keep, try to keep it out of the weather, keep it...
And that's the one, Judd, that you were going to research to see if our, our TIF money would work for that? Now, this second one is sixty-two thousand, that's over, I think the limit now is fifty-two thou, or fifty thousand before we have to start taking three bids?
Three, yeah.
So we need two more bids?
Okay.
Okay. What about the, the little building in the park, what do you guys wanna do with that?
What's in it now? I thought it was empty.
Couple, couple old fridges.
So do we need it?
The only reason really, like we, and I say we as in the park board, is if we get kicked out, you know, the backside here, we gotta find someplace to go with all of that stuff. All of our equipment that we use for whatever we do. So we need a place to put that if we ever get out of there, or have to get out of there.
Is this quote for the same size building or is it bigger?
I think it's probably bigger.
It should be bigger, I don't think the red building's that, quite that big.
Don't forget there's electricity in there.
Yeah, coming in three different directions and going out, yeah.
Yeah, we, we talked to Swoop about it, he's, he's aware.
You got a new garage on North Street and Newton, you can use the storage area.
It's gonna be coming down too.
So, you guys wanna do anything with that for now, or do table it, or what do you wanna do?
If you think there's gonna be use for it, yeah, I think we should pursue it, but...
Or do we wait till we get closer to needing a use for it? I think Dylan's app is, use for it's good, but it's only if we get out of here.
Yeah.
So what are you saying, table it for now?
I'd say let's table it right now.
Okay, let's table it for now, for that one, and we need two more quotes for the other one.
Will you? Any other questions on, anything else on the report? Thank you, Dylan.
I know, I know. I just, I wasn't done, not yet.
Yeah, I know, we, we were, we were gonna come back to you. You guys have any other questions on the report?
I do not.
Okay, no, we don't have any, anything, anybody have any questions for street water or sewer? Okay, Dylan, we're back to you.
So, back, just one last thing, back to that original, he's gotta have a computer to be able to do that job. And what, and right now, what, what he's doing is compiling a list, and he's gonna sit down with me and I'm gonna do the first wave of letters with him to show him, 'cause right now, like I said, he's just using the door hangers. I only like to use those for grass weeds, that kinda thing, because it's, you know, if you're, you know, you can't sit down with a letter on grass.
Are you computer literate, John?
I use one every day.
You do?
Yeah.
Do we have a computer that he could use?
No.
You hope we'd have to get one?
Can he use this one?
Sure.
What?
I only use this one for the town hall meeting, so we could share.
Does that got Word on it by chance?
No, it does not, so we would have to buy that package, which I think is usually like a hundred dollars or something.
Yeah, that works.
Unless you guys already have a...
It'll, it'll use Microsoft Word, and then we could set it up to print to your printer.
Okay, that works for me.
So then, back to the, back to the police department, Jamie, Jamie Wards was supposed to be here tonight, but he couldn't make it, but he had went to the county commissioners' bout, then possibly buying the police department's new body cameras and tasers. I'm on, I'm on my original body camera that the prosecutor office bought, it's dead, doesn't work. Seen its last leg. My taser is the original taser that they bought. I think I'm, I'm using the next twenty-six and, and everybody else is using ten models newer than one I am. Not exaggerating, they're on taser tens. I do not know what the actual cost, what they're going to do, I do know this. This, this package is gonna be astronomical, and I'm not sure that I want a hundred percent go with it. The cameras aren't that expensive, the tasers aren't expensive. What is, what is very, very expensive is you have to buy this big storage, like a cloud, to, to store that body, body footage on. And it's astronomical per year. Well, this thing that the county wants to do will set us up for five years, but they want the town to match X amount of dollars, whatever, the way I understand it, whatever the town could afford to do if, if they decide to do this program. Then after five years, we own the equipment, but we're gonna have to pay that storage fee. And at that point in time, in five years, I guarantee the town of Goodland won't be able to pay that storage fee on their own. So I'm actually going over to meet with Remington. I won't get over there till Wednesday, I actually had nine out, I was in training today and I got it tomorrow. So I'll see you then on Wednesday, but I wanna go look at their body cameras because they can offload the footage, put it on a thumb drive, and give it to the prosecutor. The whole thing about this cloud thing is, Judd's a defense, well, Judd's a prosecutor, he can go in there and get that footage. Like our prosecutor's off his hands, so it all goes to one place. But to me, it's, it's just an astronomical amount of money. You're not talking five grand a year for storage. For, for a one man department. Well, basically, you might as well say two, you would have either me working a reserve or a deputy. So what I wanted to do, which I hadn't been able to do, I'd like to get a quote together just to give to Tina if we were to outright buy the taser and say like the body cameras that Remington are using.
How's theirs work, where's that data saved and go to?
So they, they just offloaded onto their computer, and they just, they just stored their footage in a file, you know, on their system. It doesn't, it doesn't go to a cloud or, or anything like that.
Do they copy the prosecutor's office with it?
So the only way that their prosecutor's office can get their footage is they have to take it to them. It, it's always too big an email, so you can't email it, but I would, I mean, myself, I would provide it on a thumb drive. Because then they know there's been no editing or, or anything like that.
So you would probably need like a server to store it on, that way?
Myself?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know much about that, but...
You could buy portable external drives though, that have terabytes on them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all they're doing with this, I mean, they're, to me, it's a...
They're kinda taking a big city solution and using it at a, that's what Warren County does too, by the way. They do exactly that same thing with the, everybody buys a share and puts it all centrally located. They don't have people giving thumb drives to the...
And I've got no problem doing that, I just think it's a lot of money.
It's expensive, it's a ton of money.
And I don't think, I mean, I don't think in five years when they say, okay, you guys own the equipment, now it's up to you for the maintenance and everything else, I don't think we'd be able to afford it. It'd be great for five years.
What's the, what's the legality of your funding? Do you just have to have, if there's an incident, that's the only thing you have to save? Or you have to save every bit of it? Put the town more at risk of accuracy of the data.
Or something, we use them a lot just because somebody can't save.
We're going on the cloud, it's going on the cloud immediately.
I use mine for you, I mean, I can sit down in there with you, Joe, and the body cams, Rem, and then it may just be him making a complaint about somebody else, but I can go through and listen to his conversation. And another thing that they do, which is kinda cool on the Axons, which is the big price stuff, it's cool because if I go to Gary's place for a break-in and I talk to him for an hour, and he tells me all this information on my body cam, and it's rolling, when I come back and I offload it, it dictates the whole conversation. So I can read it instead of sit there for an hour, or hour and a half or whatever it is, and watch it. That, that's a nice benefit, but I don't know that that benefit, like Judd's saying, the price is astronomical.
So we'll just wait and see what you find out?
And then I'm gonna need to purchase, I'd like two laptops, one would work, but we're going to the new CAD system for the county, and I just need to get updated with, with the vehicle CAD. So I'll just get with you and turn in some quotes on that to Nina. And then, I think, I think sitting back there at the end of, towards the end of last week, I think I got an email from Ward T., and I, I can forward that to you on that, that stuff that he discussed with the county, and email it to all three of you if you want.
Okay.
What's the CAD stuff you're referencing?
The CAD system is, is what we use to do reports, it does everything. We do our reports on there, they, they give a, they can dispatch us over there, over it. We, we, once we go on duty and we log into it, I can see everybody that's out on patrol at that time and exactly what they're doing, if they're on a call, then it lets, I can see that they're on a call. I can sit there and, and search the whole, you know, database.
Like, can you run plates and criminal histories?
Yes.
And, and they know your location, and so if everybody is using the same CAD system, everybody knows where everybody's at?
Like right now, what we use is called P-Sims, but we're going to something different, I don't even know what it is. It's supposed to maybe be in place about September, is the last I heard on it.
Is that it, Dylan?
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else for Dylan? I wanna go back to building code enforcement. We can't just go on people's property and do things. The only way we can do that is if it has gone through the building code process, and then we say, okay, now it's time to take down a building, or it's time to do this, if they don't, we can. Then you could go on their property and do that. But other than that, you can't just go on somebody's property and do something, even if it's in violation of a code, until it's been through this whole process.
The two that we did was, I have been here, Dylan wrote them up a long time ago.
That'd be the cars and the...
I thought there was trees or something.
Well, there is, there's all those weeds and all that grown up around that building. So when I sent him the letter, I sent him two notices, well, actually five, cuz one for each vehicle plus the weeds and...
But it's been, it's been all the way through here where we said we're gonna take it down or we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that?
Are we, wait, what are we talking about?
About two empty lots of weeds.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about something totally different.
These are the two Bigfoot properties on West Junior Street.
Oh, those are the continuous enforcements.
Are they total grass or what are they?
Yeah, for cutting grass.
No, and trees, they had, both of them had trees on the ground.
Okay, so if this just talks...
I didn't write those up for the trees, I wrote them up because we've been mowing them for the last three years.
Right, but what the thing is, is John went in there, cleaned up all the trees and...
Oh, I see, I see.
It's vegetation, that's fine. Okay. And to your point about you can't just go on property. So once they've been made aware of the issue for real estate nuisances, I mean, and I, it's shocking to read this. It's a guy that believes in your castle. After you've been notified of a real estate nuisance, yes, you can go on their property and do whatever you told them you were gonna do if they didn't do it.
But I'm saying it should, needs to go through the process.
They gotta get notice of the problem and an opportunity to cure it. And then when they don't, you can go traipsing across people's fenced-in property and, I mean, it's astonishing. I read that law and I thought it was a typo in the Indiana code, they've left out the word "not" because it was so broad, but no, that's, there's a whole series of cases interpreting that power and it's broad to go in and take care of problems.
But just before you do it, it has to go on, have gone through the process?
And that's why I haven't, like the cars, I haven't done anything, cuz I counted forty-one cars that we have in town that maybe a couple of them are not junk, I don't know. One of them left town today on its own.
Okay, well Wayne Schreiner had a garden hose burst in the heat while they were gone in the evening, he's requesting a sewer credit. So that water obviously didn't go down. Anyone wanna make, wanna make a motion on giving Wayne Schreiner a sewer credit?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to give him credit for that.
It's been moved, we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And then Scott Marvin on August fifth, he forgot to turn the sprinkler off his garden from eight-thirty to four-thirty while he was at work and he's wondering if he can get a sewer credit, well, he said reduced cost, but the best we could do is a sewer credit for that.
Make a motion for that one as well.
It's been moved, we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Does he know about the meter idea? Scott Marvin, I mean, if he's...
I told him about it.
If he's watering his garden, he wouldn't need to...
Yeah, I told him when they came in and wrote that letter.
Okay, anything else, Judd? I never heard back from Inco Green about that agreement. They, he, the guy, whatever his name is, said he had to speak with his people about our proposal. And that was the last time I did anything on that was right before I went on vacation, which would have been like July twenty-third or something like that, twenty-fourth. So it's, we're coming up to a month now on that with no, no progress. I don't know if anybody's been digging out there, I was wondering if they started the construction or not to put in their utilities.
I, not that I know of, I asked Dustin about that on Tuesday.
Say, I know they were there repairing the sewer at one point, as there was an emergency located for it a while ago. But other than that, that's the only thing I've heard of going on over there.
Their sewer goes to their own septic tank, right?
Right.
I don't believe so.
Well, I thought they had separate sewer that...
They get large sewer, cuz it crosses that county road, it goes into a manhole structure right by useful products and then meanders over to twenty-four. I don't think there's anything else on it, but just them.
And so that's still open and then we asked Baker Tilly to do the, a new annexation fiscal plan that they're still working on, I guess, they said that it would be sixty to ninety days, that was requested on July eighteenth. So we're still waiting on that. And then the only other things that I had were the two things that we've talked about with the development money contributions to the pot's, building proposal and Rose's proposal to develop his residential lots.
Okay, anything else, Judd? Anybody have anything for Judd?
Just chasing the change of why we had fifty-three and now we got seven.
I'm looking into that, yeah, no, that's, that's a whole thing.
Okay.
But, and what I'm seeing about that is that'll be part of me just putting together a file on this with all the documents, the, what the territory is, what the economic development plan is, who the board members are, all of that stuff needs to be in one folder so we can figure out what the source of the money that may just date back to two thousand and eight, so we get some runway left, but to make sure that nothing that's in there is something older than two thousand and eight cuz we're gonna be in the eleventh hour on it if it's older and I'd like to know.
Yeah, we need to know. Anybody else have anything they need to discuss with the council?
I just have an announcement, the Goodland Park and Rec Board is organizing a fall festival. Any business organization wanting to participate, you can come to our meeting this Thursday, the twenty-first at five-thirty here in the conference room.
Okay. Anybody else? Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.